Welcome to the select board meeting for June 24th, 2021. Called order at 6:34 PM. Use a product called go to webinar. All content is recorded. Can join listen only mode via phone or with a mobile device or computer. And ask questions by raising your hand or entering in the question box. Your questions are all part of the record and will be taken at the discretion of the chair. Thanks everyone for the short notice meeting. No updates on COVID-19?
Nope.
Topic of business tonight is discussion regarding repair replace of Flag Hill Road server. Not server, wow sewer, I'm sorry.
I may actually take server for a second.
I could fix the server maybe.
We got two other people can fix this.
Oh, welcome Pete Glenn, thank you both for joining us. So I guess Pete, the floor is yours. Want to give us the background on, I know you sent an email and I skimmed it, but probably be better if you brought us up to speed.
Okay, um, from the beginning.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, so on Tuesday I received the call from a Flag Hill resident. They said that they think their sewer was getting backed up. And so me and Pete Walsh went up there and he said that he thought it was coming out of the, there's a raised structure on the south end of Flag Hill Road. And we popped that structure. It was full, but it wasn't coming out. So then we know from past experience that it flows to the center of Flag Hill Road where there's another structure just over the bank. That leads with another line leading out of it that goes right down to North Street. That structure was also full. So basically we called Montague, they came over with their jet truck. They had sucked it out first. When they were sucking it out, they pulled out a good sized dish rag and a face cloth. And a bunch of wipes and they tried jetting the line. They got in probably about forty-four, forty-five feet and they couldn't get any further. So at that point, um, we're at the drawing board figuring out what we're going to do. Being that there was only four houses that go to this one structure. They would, they would probably be fine till morning. So that night, I believe I informed Brian what was going on. The next morning we went out there and checked it. The, the center structure wasn't full. There was, there was, it was probably like half full. And we monitored it throughout the rest of the day figuring when we're gonna have to like call in. The goal was to call in our sanitary service we use to suck out the basin till we could figure out how to fix this. The end of the day on Wednesday is still was half full. So after thinking about it, we figured we'd get a hold of Fletcher Sewer and Drain, have them come out and have a go at it. Cause they actually have a cutter. Montague doesn't have any cutters, which basically will go in and cut out roots or whatever obstruction that there are. So mostly sanitary came out this morning around eight thirty. They sucked out the catch basin. They had a smaller line which we shoved down. The line that goes over the hill as far as they could go, which was probably like twenty-five feet into it and suck that out. Then Fletcher Sewer and Drain showed up around ten thirty. I brought them out there. The first thing they did was try jetting it. They managed to break a hole through all the fluid that was in there drained out. So we knew we punched a hole through it. They cambered it. There was some more rags down there that were hung up on. There is some root infiltration. That line that goes over the bank is made out of the orange bird clay pipe. It comes in four foot sections. So you have a bunch of sections hooked together to go down that bank about a hundred feet's worth. And after Cameron had seen the roots, we put the cutter in then they cut out as much as the roots as they could. And then they also put them in a larger snake with a bigger bore head on it. And they actually made it all the way down to the main on North Street. So right now, the line is running fine. There's still some root intrusion. We, we definitely, I would safely say we bought ourselves a lot of time. How much depends how much debris gets flushed down there. Cause it can get hung up on those feeder roots and then it just builds up and then you have blockage again. We're good. Like the, after speaking with the guy from Fletcher Sewer and Drain, even he says we're, we'll be pretty good for a while, but it's, it's definitely going to be a situation we have to address. So there's, there's speaking with Brian and Glenn, I mean, there's a couple of things here that we could do. At some point redo the line, go down the south end of Flag Hill. The other thing that we, I don't know how we'd go about addressing it. I've spoke to all the residents before. No flushing wipes or anything else down there except for what should go down the sewer. And I, I don't know how we're gonna control that situation.
So between when I scheduled the meeting and today, we're in a better place and it's an emergent.
We, yes, we're no longer in emergency state. Everything's flowing. It's a six inch line. There's probably like maybe an inch and a half to two inches of roots sticking in here or there. Everything should pass through unless all of a sudden someone flushes another towel down there or whatever. And then you could, there's a possibility it would make it through. There's also a possibility it could get hung up.
Brian, I know I doubt we've noticed. So this is the third time this has happened in, in how long Pete?
In the past year. It happened late last summer, early fall. The date exactly, I can't find where I wrote it down. And then it happened again on December tenth and each time there were rags and wipes, mostly wipes. And then after the incident on December tenth, we also waited, I don't know, it was like maybe a week or so, then we had the fire department come up and dump a thousand gallons of wine. I was gonna have them if I can do it tomorrow or next week at some point, just to give it a, a good flushing. But it's, it's the third time now in less than a year.
Brian, were you able to talk to council at all about any advice on the homeowner side of this? I mean, if they're putting things down the drain, they're causing this and you know, could have potentially cost us a, you know, tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars project right now to fix.
I haven't been able to go hold the council yet, but I hope to have an answer for you very early next week.
So I guess for me, one thing is what further action to notify and warn citizens that this isn't, you know, acceptable. And then potentially, you know, what's a recourse if we end up with a hundred thousand dollar sewer, you know, system repair because of these kind of actions? I mean, I hate that the bulk of the citizens are bearing the the misconduct of four, if you will. Um, and I don't know who it is. It's, it's some one or more of those four. The other piece that I had wondered is can we put any kind of filters, screens, gates? I don't know, something at the end of each private connection on the hill that would actually stop it from getting into our line and, and plug it up in their line instead. And is that, is that even okay? Is that something we should do? You know, all the implications of that, but I mean, if they're putting things down that are impacting our system, can we stop it? So it's not doing it if they're not following the guidance.
You, you could probably bring something, make something that you could put in there. You'd have to have a stamped enough size hole to let waste through and toilet paper, but hopefully it would, you know, catch some, some rags or wipes. There's one point that we could put them and it would catch it from two residents. You wouldn't be able to tell which one it came from. And then there's one residence in the middle. There's no way to access it. It's, it's tied in on the ground. It's not in a, a structure sewer structure. And then on the furthest end, there is a sewer structure. But I, to be honest with you, I don't think anything came from that residence because the way their line comes into the sewer structure would have got hung up there. You know, it's, it's an old system. Originally the two houses that were in the middle, one of them was tore down. I believe were probably the only houses up there at one. I don't, I don't know the true history. And the other residents were added on.
And maybe, and maybe that's not, that's not a path we can take. I don't necessarily, I'm not, not encouraging us just to be clear to be making it so something would back up into someone's home. I don't, I'm not trying to do that either, right? Just.
No, just something that would catch the rags.
All right. I'm sure I have more questions, but Bill, if you have any.
Um, so do you have a breakdown of the total costs? And the three incidents for the last year?
Um, I'd have to go back and see what the bill was. Montague has been very good. The last time they were out, we actually didn't receive a bill. The time before that we did. And it was, it was like $300. What the bill would be for today as far as having also sanitary come out and suck it out. That's probably a two, $300 bill. And then for Fletcher Sewer and Drain. The gentleman didn't have his pad. They're gonna email me the invoice. I should have it tomorrow. That would probably, I bet you that could be probably somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred, maybe if I was to guess.
Now, the, um, you were, if you had to take a stab at it, I mean, we were talking tens plus thousands of dollars of repair work. If that didn't clear it, that we were coming here to talk about figuring out how to do tonight, right? Is it, is that accurate to replace the line and who knows what else?
Well, I mean, I would spoke about this with Glenn. I, I would say the best way would be you would abandon or not try to replace the line that cuts down through the woods. Cause there's, there's a lot of big trees there now. That thing has probably been there sixty years, maybe, maybe more. I don't know. So as far as to redo the whole sewer line down Flag Hill and come down the south end. I don't, I, we'd have to try to figure out. I, I mean, Glenn, do you have an idea?
So based off of the drainage structures, catch basins that we buy, the sewer ones are a little bit different because they have the, they're, they're molded on the bottoms of them for, to fit the pipe through them. They're rubber gasketed. Typically our concrete structures are around five, $600. I find an estimate now with the increase of the concrete this year, uh, the steel. For us to do them ourself, buy them ourself, I'm thinking probably, probably a thousand, $1,200 a piece. There's three structures that would be needed and probably what 350 feet, probably a pipe connections. I, I don't have a price on, on pipe either, but if, if, if I had to guess in-house Jake, I would, I would think we should be able to do it for probably ten to fifteen thousand. Depending if we're gonna run into ledge headed down the south side of Flag Hill. Uh, there's a very good possibility of that in that area.
If we hired it out, we're talking probably fifteen or more, right?
If, if I had to guess, probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty. Because of prevailing wage, we've gotta love the prevailing wage.
Well, that and here we've got a specification that deals with things like ledge or, or other things, because those things will jack up costs quickly. And if you write a specification to, uh, to bait with those unknowns that can drive costs, they're going to pad the bid to be more favorable to them in case they encounter those things. And then we've seen a wild bidding market right now. We're seeing almost double in terms of the range between the lowest and highest bid. So Glenn's estimate, I, I thought we were coming to you today to maybe say we need to schedule a special town meeting as soon as possible for maybe up to a hundred thousand dollars for this. I, I think his estimate is probably fairly accurate. The, the internal option may be now that we've bought ourselves some time with today's work, maybe your best option. It still leaves some unknown and obviously the guys are pretty busy, but this is an important job.
Does it have to be engineered? I know a question around that. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
No, it doesn't. I actually spoke with D P today. That was my concern because of all the new rules and regs with infrastructure and it doesn't need to be engineered.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I, I just have a question. And this is to Glenn and Pete. So is the answer to this problem increasing the size of the line?
No, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it has anything to do with the size of the line. I think it has to do with the root infiltration that's coming in that old pipe. You know, and it, I think probably if it didn't have the roots going through there, it would probably just flow through. If that was a six inch plastic line that's down through there, probably nothing would get hung up on it. And it would make it down to where it would probably cause problems at some point down at the yard street pump station.
Right. I mean, the size of the rags that we pulled out of there yesterday, those, those would get the, if they got in a slow flowing part of it, even a six inch line. It, it would eventually build up and you'd have a clog. I mean, this, this was literally like a small bath towel and then like a face cloth and how it got in there, I have no idea.
Having kids in, in those houses, I mean, kids usually flush things down the door.
I'd like to know if like the toilet they have that take a towel this size, I'm telling you.
Really? Okay.
That's what, so I was with you, Bill. I mean, not that I was trying to, you know, pin it on anyone, but the, the idea that that's a kid. Wouldn't surprise me, but I, I have a Pete's question. Who managed to get that to go down the drain?
I mean, we're, we're talking a towel that was probably three and a half feet in length. And it was probably two feet across. So it was like a small bath towel. And then there was like a, a standard household washcloth also. And, and then also a bunch of, of those wipes, which don't break down, break apart. So I, I, I don't know how, you know, I was so dumbfounded, but the gentleman from Fletcher told me they were in, I forgot the name of the town. It begins with S this past week or a week before. And they pulled a pair of jeans out of a clogged sewer. So I, how does this stuff get in there? It's beyond my belief. I don't know.
That's a strong plunger Scott.
My only theory is that I can think of if, if somebody's just getting rid of stuff and they have a large line of some sort, if they have a clean out in the basement of their house. I mean, that's usually a four to six inch cap, but still the stuff a towel down there. I, I don't get it.
Can, can you illustrate roughly on the map where the line is now and where you're proposing line, the new line would go? Cause you're saying abandon and create new, right?
Is that big enough?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, cause I'm outside. I'm just kinda looking at the light. Um.
I don't think I have any drawing tools.
Oh yeah.
No, just about where the red cursor is. I think that's about where it goes down over the hill, doesn't it Pete?
Yeah, it's just, it's just about, it's, it's between, do you, do you guys remember where Abe used to live? It's between Abe, as you're looking at his house and the neighbor to the right, you, it, it runs down over the bank. Yeah, somewhere right there.
That comes down that hill, it comes right out on North Street, right around here. I don't know if you can see my, my, you're here, yeah.
Yep.
And you're instead thinking of having it just come south down from the marker there all the way there, from the home straight down?
Yes, actually at the, at that end, at the bottom of Flag Hill, it's actually, as you're coming down the hill, it's on the Key Up Brook side of the yellow line in the center line. There is a sewer manhole structure. So if we could run it right into that, then you now have an access point to clean upward if you ever had to.
So my only other question, if you all decide to do that version of a repair. The second part to this, and I don't know if we have the, the skill or the ability or legally what we need to do. If we abandon that other line, it's going to private property. I need to find out, what do we need to do to clean, remove or clean and cap and leave? Do we abandon? If we have a legal easement there, do we abandon that and return that to the property owner? I don't think we want to leave a line. I mean, now it, it doesn't have sewage stored in it. So that's a but I don't know that you want to leave all of that if it's clay in the ground to be ruptured in the future.
I was, I was informed Brian that we could leave it, just cap the end, the inflow end. So it'd be the up, the, the upper end of it. Yep. And the other main that's in there, we can, you can also leave that there in the ground. As long as it's, it's been run, it's, you know, nothing's plugged. There's, you know, gallons just sitting there in it.
Right. So you would, I, I would suspect you would probably flush that line anyways, right? Before you close.
Sure. Yeah, we, we could bring a fire truck up and dump a thousand gallons down through it. That'll flush it right out.
So this, this sounds more like a, a, a regular where we're at now, a regular capital improvement?
Yes. The idea though is are you interested in doing something outside of your capital improvement schedule? Our projects for FY22 were decided back in December and we've already got a full plate, though this is a priority. It's not currently funded, though it sounds like London and Pete have identified some options that maybe we could get the cost low enough that it would fit in the existing wastewater budget. Otherwise we need to go back to town meeting because we have no other appropriation to pull this from. And if you wanted it, if you, if you decided that you did want to put this out to bid and you did want it engineered. That's a much more expensive proposition like Glenn was talking about. And we certainly do not have that appropriated. So we would have to go to town meeting. You won't have free cash or retained earnings certified to November. So those are not available to you. We'd have to do stabilization. So it's more of a question of how quickly do you want to do this? The emergency piece was resolved this morning. So that's a relief. But is this something you're willing to wait a year and a half on? Or is this something that you want done sooner? And if you want it done sooner, do you want to outsource and go to town meeting? Or do you want to in-house it and try to work within our existing budgets in line of?
So I have an off the wall idea, Brian, after last Monday's meeting. What about the $523,000 sewer project, isn't it?
How many ways do we want to spend that money? It's true. You're, you're right. You're right.
I already thought of that.
And I'm not saying even for outside, I mean, I, I don't know the scope. Like if we were doing the work, does it still qualify? And I don't know all those answers, but is it a source? Is it possibly a source? Could be. It's a source we didn't have two weeks ago. And this is a project we didn't have two weeks ago. So, you know, I don't know.
Yep, that's actually a really good point.
Is that money that could be used? All right, go ahead Jake.
No, go ahead.
Is, is that a source of funds that could be used for an, an in-house project though? Or does that money have to be for an engineered project and, you know, a firm to do the work?
Whatever procurement methods we use have to align with the federal government requirements. And so the bigger you make the project, the more requirements you have to fulfill. So an in-house project, if we're using existing staff and that's taking care of that payroll and all we're doing is buying materials and renting equipment. Those are easier boxes to check. Yep.
Well, being it's not quite as pressing as it was, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we don't make a decision tonight, but I don't think we have to make a decision tonight. Uh, where, you know, Tuesday, we thought we did. Have to start acting. Knowing like what Brian said, that we've already got a pretty full docket scheduled for our team in-house especially. Is that realistic? Is that realistic to take on ourselves? I understand it saves us a lot of money, but that's only one part of the, the equation, you know? So I, I guess I'm just asking that question, you know, and, and it doesn't sound like it needs to happen in July. Maybe it can happen in September, October, you know? I don't know how long this, this, this fix will last, but if most of the roots have been trimmed, then maybe we leak by for a little longer, you know? I don't know.
I, I
Go ahead Pete.
Oh, I, I, I think the keys to this are gonna be one of the first things we do somehow is get across to the individuals up there on Flag Hill not to or plead with them, whatever, beg, borrow, steal, not to flush stuff down because if anything, that will shorten our window. Um, if it's right now, it's, they used a cutter. There's, like I said, where there was roots. They made it all the way down pretty much to the bottom. The jet made it all the way out to the main on North Street. I, I think with the way it is sitting right now, if, if they keep the, the rags and towels out of it. I, I believe we could go for quite a long while, probably. You know, I mean, the problem is the rags, the roots been cut out. So and then my only other question that I would be concerned when, if we were to take this on ourselves is the other thing we gotta think about Glenn would be if we run a line all intact in place from the beginning, then when we switch over to tie-ins or do we gotta do a bypass? I don't know if, if that anybody has thought of that.
What's that tying, tying into residential stuff?
Yeah, I mean, as, as you're going along. So I'm, I'm assuming we'd start at the bottom of the hill and work our way out and tie in as you go. And then your last existing one and switch that one over.
Again, I really don't, I know you're gonna keep there. I know you're gonna keep everything flowing. But depending on what the layout is up there, we could keep everything probably off the edge of the road. And, um, you know, and go back and do the tie-ins. After everything is all in, so everything keeps flowing like it is.
Yep.
I don't know. I, I do know that we have some big projects that have been approved already. The big one is, uh, you know, the mountain road, Gary Street Cemetery part of it. But if anything is gonna get put off to a fall time Jake, I would think it would be that one. And, you know, to get this one taken care of first, we've, the cemetery and that problem has been there for a long time. I'm glad that the town approved us on doing it. It saved a lot of money to do that. It's gonna be a nice fun project. But I guess in prior, prioritizing things. If you want this done in-house, then I would say we should do this one first.
Glenn, do you do? What do you want to anticipate if you did this in-house, the cost would be?
If, if I had to guess from somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand, depending on if, and if we run into ledge on the way down. Flag Hill, the south side of it, then we would have to hire contractor to come in with a piece of equipment with a jackhammer on it to get through it. Three hundred and fifty feet of pipe, even maybe on the high side at a hundred dollars a section now, you know, maybe thirty-five hundred dollars in plate. You know, three thousand, thirty-five hundred and, and structures, you've got connections. We have a lot of the material to backfill with. The only thing we would have to buy is a, a processed material that goes, you know, the, the top foot before the blacktop. And we would have to rent a, a small mini excavator because a lot of that is in a tight area. And just the back of it was, would just be more of a pain than useful.
Good.
You know, other, other than, uh, you know, payroll, I think material wise, rented equipment wise, probably ten to fifteen thousand.
And then what about, are do every paving? Is that included in there?
Well, it would be patch paving at that point because a whole road needs to be milled and paved. It should have been done the year that North Street and Church Street project was done because they all connect together. That's the year that I was, uh, put into position as, you know, taken over. So that job was already procured. I know there's a property owner that bought that thirty plus acres. There's been no mention on what he's gonna do with that property. I don't, I think Jackie had said that there's something with the road that would have to be improved if he did do anything up there, you know, at, at their expense. Which comes to this, you know, do we, do we add another structure in the middle there for them to do any tie-ins for any future development in there? Or do we save fifteen hundred dollars not put a structure in? And then when whatever happens up there, then the contract is responsible for, you know, putting the additional structure in for their tie-ins. So there is still some what ifs here.
Go ahead Bill.
I, I, could you fill me in on what you're doing with the cemetery?
So, um, I believe we approved for seventy-five thousand. So, um, I believe we approved for seventy-five thousand. Remember in time, I believe it's time bond gave us a, an estimate to put a big block wall up there to stop the erosion on the mountain street side of it, mountain road? So we're actually changing the drainage of that and changing the toe of the slope of that to bring it out to the edge of the road now. To, to help the erosion on that side.
It'll also fix the, the runoff and the drainage off a mountain road, the structures are below grade and brings them up to the roadside. So it was a good, uh, it was a good proposal from one and, and his team.
Well, I, I think, I, I, I tend to think that project is, is important and, and shouldn't be finished, um, just the cemetery project. And, and it's saving us some money to begin with. I think I, I'd rather roll the dice and see what happens. Um, it, it appears that this, this line is, is now clear and functional. I'd like to take a, a wings tactic with it. If not, um, I would, I would go for us trying to do this in-house as opposed to going outside with it. Um, if we just absolutely had to. And because it is clear, I, I, I really don't, I really don't feel comfortable in wanting to, to jump in and pull this line out and fix it and do all these things based on someone who's being totally insubordinate in one or more houses and putting something in the line that shouldn't be there.
So Brian, the, the federal money, just, just out of curiosity, when does that have to be spent by?
December of twenty twenty-four.
Oh, geez, okay. I figured we had twelve months, all right. Bill, I, I agree with you, and I, I know we, I'm sorry, Brian, did you, were you not done?
I was just gonna say, that's why the reporting period can go as late as twenty twenty-seven.
So, I agree with you, Bill, I don't think we should bump other projects if we're sustainable, we think we're sustainable right now. Obviously, we're aware of it, if it happens again, then we'll, we'll take other action, but, um, at the same time, I'd like to, to plan to do it. You know, not, not, not necessarily put it off indefinitely. So, I guess what I, what I would get at is, you know, if there's planning work or any kind of design work we need beyond, you know, procuring materials and, and that kind of thing, let's, let's try to work on that in the background and then have a plan ready to do, you know, my thought would be next spring. Or at the end of the fall, you know, before winter hits, if, if other projects are wrapped up and we have the time. Is what I'm thinking, Bill, if that makes sense to you.
That, that makes sense to me. I, I think it's a good way to go.
Pete, is sliplining that line a waste of money, or is that line too small to be sliplined, the one going over the hill?
The one going over a hill years ago, I believe it was somewhere around two thousand and twelve when we sliplined, um, Citroform came in and we did that end of town. Um, it was brought up and mentioned just because of the style of the line, the, the best way to slipline that at the time was to do what they call a pipe burst. Um, they'd run a device down there, it explodes and opens up the pipe, and then it kind of has its shape, and then they would try to get a liner down there. It's been a controversy as to whether or not that's a four-inch liner, six-inch line. And I, I think at the time, the engineers thought it was a four-inch, that's why they were saying we'd have to pipe burst it. Because you'd have to make it bigger to slipline it. It's, it's an old line, that's the way they did things back then.
I was, I was just thinking, if, if, if they're looking to buy time and maybe procure a little bit more, maybe even reach out to to David Brooks to see if he has any plans up there before we go too far with this, now that the line is open. May, may, maybe this, maybe a sliplining thing would, you know, give a little bit more time also, because there's nothing wrong with everything that's in the road. And the lines are leading to that structure, correct?
Correct, that, that all seems to be working fine, it's just where it goes into that final structure before it goes over the hill. It starts to get hung up there, then it gets backed up in a line that goes over the hill. Everything up there is a six inch, even if Mr. Brooks decided to develop up there, a six-inch line could handle a lot, you wouldn't wanna even like on the main, you wouldn't want to do a eight inch, um, from everybody I've been talking to is because it would be too large and you could end up with solids settling out. Then you'd have problems, so we'd, we'd end up staying with a six inch. The only problem also with pipe bursting and sliplining is they have to have an entrance and an exit point unless the method has changed, but the last I knew they would, so that means we'd have to find where that line ties into the main down on North Street and open it up. So that's the other problem.
And, and again, I think that's something that we, that we could do if there was an option. Like I say, I, I don't know if it is, or if it's, anybody wants to take that risk of doing this pipe burst method, I, I don't know what it is, I've never seen it. But it may cause more damage and good also than by the sounds of it with that style pipe.
It wouldn't, I don't, I don't think it would, I don't think it would, but I think the whole process of that, the cost of that would probably be more than running a new line down and go down the south end of Flag Hill.
Oh, that, that's what I was asking, is, is it a waste of money?
I, I, I think by the time you're done getting that special company in, to pipe burst it and slipline it, I think you'd be right up there. It, it would definitely be costly more than what we could do it for. Would it be more if it was contracted out? I, I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
Well, I mean, does, does the idea of saying, you know, kind of having a sketched-out plan of what we'd want to do, which we kind of talked through, so it doesn't sound like there's a lot left to do on the shelf and, and in, in our scheduling of next year, plan to, you know, plan to do it in the spring or, or summer, you know, whenever, whenever's the right time. And, and then if something goes wrong again this summer or fall, and we decide it's time to pull the trigger and bump another project while we're ready to do it, fine, you know, or if at the end of the summer, the, the major projects are wrapped up and we're in a position where it's not bumping anything and we have the time, then, then we do it. Does that, does that give either of you a big concern or heartburn?
No, it doesn't, I'm fine with it, I mean, we, the, like you said, we could get a punch list of what we're gonna need for materials, we can go measure the road. We'll get a count of how many structures, we'll, we'll, uh, plan it accordingly, where, you know, if we gotta put a structure in just for cleanout purposes, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it right and, and do it so it'll last, and we can service it.
Right, and like you mentioned, the bypass or how we go by and do the install and all that, if we map all that out and we have it kind of, you know, on the shelf, ready, then, me, I'm comfortable with that level of, of waiting and, and I guess you call it risk, you know, that, that we have to do it sooner.
It, it's, the only thing that I would ask is that somehow, and, and this would be a thing once we talked to legal, I mean, how, how do we approach the residents and really convey to them that they, they can't be doing this?
I will, uh, I'll get the response from legal and I'll go back through our regulations, I'm pretty sure our regulations are pretty clear on this. I have to go back and see what the mechanism is for dealing with situations where people are not adhering to that, but I'll finish that.
Um, Pete, can you put a, i- is it possible to put a, a camera in the line that, that stays there permanently, um, and, and can monitor what's coming through?
I wish you could. I don't know, I, I don't know if I'd want to watch that all day long. Stuff as it is, Bill.
Why, why did I have to be the first one to laugh? You guys are, you guys are weak.
Oh, I'm thinking of some sort of show, but I'm trying not to say it on, on, however, in the public.
I mean, I can, years ago, before we did the upgrade at the plant, um, long story short, there was a machine that was supposed to chop up rags and stuff that comes into the plant. It would work haphazardly. I, I actually made a little basket with a net thing and I put it after the machine and I was catching rags and stuff, whatever, we could do something like that, but it would only, we, we would only be able to do it in one of the structures, which would just be tracking what comes down from two houses. The only thing you have to do with that is you'd, you'd want to check it every day, just because you don't want anything to get backed up, you don't want to back up to, up anybody's line or anything like that.
Well, at least that would do it, it would, it would, you know, direct it down to at least two people.
Correct.
You know, if it's happening, Pete, that would be in that raised structure, right?
Yes. I mean, I could, I could make something and, and we could try it, but it doesn't hurt to try, I don't mind trying, I mean, I'd like to know narrow it down where it's coming from, actually, I'd like to know exactly where it's coming from, but that's a, you know, and then what do you do when you, if you do narrow it down? That's, that would be all what we'd find out from council, so.
So, about that plan, about putting it, I mean, because the bulk of the work, I think, is your team, right? So any, I mean, are you, any major concerns with putting it on the docket for the future and, and planning it, rather than trying to shoehorn it in now?
Uh, no, it, it's, it's not a problem, you know, it's, it's, it's actually a very, you know, a, a simple system, you know, you've got four houses up there right now with a potential of more. It's a quiet road, um, so you know, traffic wouldn't be a problem and, you know, in either direction, none of it would all be tied up at once. Um, if I had to guess, it's, it's probably, it'd probably be a two-week project for us probably from start to finish and hopefully no major interruptions. That's, that's the only downside of, with us doing it, is if there's a major interruption, you know, it's gonna get put on hold. Um, I hundred percent understand why a lot of projects get procured, because they're, they're big and they're, I don't want to say they're above our means and, and ability to do them, but the timeframe of stuff, this is one I just, I, I have a hard time seeing a hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars to be outsourced for this one, Jake, when we're perfectly capable of doing this in-house.
I, I support that and appreciate, you know, appreciate all of you coming with a better solution that, that's more cost-effective and heck, we, we have federal money to pay for it with, that's even better. Yeah, I, I think, Brian, I would want to earmark some of that when we're doing these other projects, is try to earmark some of that money too, if Bill, if Bill agrees, rather than going out and asking for more money.
Yeah, I agree.
In, in the meantime, Glenn, is it possible when we have an opening, and I don't know if this is how we, we would do it, but if someone had mentioned it, on the south hillside of Flag Hill, whenever we have a window, if we're gonna do this project in the future, dig some sort of test pit or something where we could tell if it's ledge? Or do we not want to go there?
Just we, 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 I think we have to at, at, at some point before we do it. Yeah, and the, the other part of that, Jake, is, is a timeframe thing. I don't think this is anything that I would want to start, you know, any later than, you know, the end of September. We, we know what happens with the weather in New England and you just, like I say, two weeks plus, you know, if, if we run into problems. It's just the wrong time of year to be opening something up for too long.
So what I think,
Sorry.
I think what I, what I heard Bill saying, if I'm correct, and, and what I agree with is we've got a pretty full docket, and while I appreciate you guys coming up with a solution and that we don't have to outsource it, and I still want to go that route, I think planning to do it in time slot that makes sense, and if we have the opportunity in September or earlier to do it, because everything else is wrapped up, fine. Uh, if we don't, then, you know, whether it's spring or summer when it dries out, you know, whatever that timeline is, planning it, uh, you know, a year out and, and crossing our fingers that we've cleared it long enough to hold till then. Or even if it's a, you know, jetting it a few more times, as long as it's not completely failing.
Right.
Just to me, feels like more what we're trying to do, you know, trying to do less of these emergencies and, and upsetting every, all the plans and schedule and, and frankly, we've all been, everyone has been working really hard in the last year and a half, two years, with everything that's been going on and to just keep piling on and trying to fit them all in anyway, is what we're trying to stop doing. At least that's what I want to see us stop doing, you know, we can't burn everyone out just because it's cost-effective, we'd like to do it or we want to avoid risk, I mean, we can't avoid every risk.
Well, I, I'd at least like to see, if that's what everybody's open to, is to doing it in-house, as it fits in before it becomes an emergency thing again. Pete, I think we get a material list, I think we get structures ordered, I think, I think we need to get the, the structures in the pipe to have it. At least the structures anyways, pipe you don't want sitting outside for too long, it gets brittle, uh, the gaskets get dried up in them. But I, I think we need to at least work on that part of it, we're all agreeing that we're gonna do it in-house. At least get the structures to have them, because they all have to be made to order.
I don't have any problem with that.
I agree.
July one, you'll have your, your capital improvement line, you have ten thousand dollars already in there, so even haven't received the other money yet, and we need to do this, you can start ordering structures from there. So, yeah, we have more flexibility.
I, I heard some comment there, Glenn, that you brought up about, um, what may or may not change in that landscape in the future. Uh, Bill, I don't know your thoughts, um, my take is, we don't know and if there was a major change, then that cost burden should belong with the change and not with what we're doing.
I agree.
So, if there's provisions in terms of the way you put it in, fine, but provisions in terms of adding costs to our project to do it, then I wouldn't do that.
Correct, yeah.
Um, so we would just, are we patching that? Do we have someone come in and patch, is that, just back to my asphalt question? When you're done, is that what you do? Just somebody does a patch job for us?
Correct, well, no, we, we could do it, we would do the patch, so like I say, most of the stuff is gonna be on the edge of the road anyways. Because again, if, if there is a water system that comes into town at some point, there needs to be a separation between the two of them. So we keep the sewer on one side of the road, water be on the other side of the road. So, yeah, it, it would be probably a few feet off the edge of the road, except where a structure goes, you know, they're five-foot diameter. But, yeah, there, there would be minimal, probably minimal patching with the asphalt. But again, the road does need to be done at some point. Anytime after this project is done. There, there's a lot of those. Pete, wonder if you, if you could talk to Phil tomorrow, maybe put them on like, uh, an every couple of weeks schedule to keep flushing a thousand gallons down through that?
I mean, we, we do it once to twice a year at certain spots throughout the town anyways, so we'll just add one more to it, it's, they've been good about fitting into the schedule, um, I've never been told no, so I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask for one more spot.
All that, and just not even twice a year, even if you know, like it's every other week or every third week, just to keep that line clean and all it is just gonna buy you more time.
Yep.
You know, also, for, for, to have less problems.
Yep.
So, in, in the meantime, can we send a letter to the residents of those, both, uh, properties in, on Flag Hill? Advising them, advising them of the situation and of the potential cost and damage that's occurring from unwanted items?
I will work on that as soon as we get the response from, uh, council.
Okay.
I, I'd even add in the repair, the other cost of what this week has costed. It costed so far between Fletcher and, and Bolcey and Montague, your overtime, Pete, and all that stuff, I would add that into that letter.
Yeah, I have spoken to each household at one point or another, um, and you know, they, they, they all say, no, not, we're not, no, no.
But there's something, if we send something by, by mail, so they have something in writing, so one more thing, first of all, back on if we did have to take recourse.
Correct.
I agree. Okay. Is there anything else we needed to determine? I think, Brian, you know, obviously, we, the board would like to know what, um, what year back from council and what we can notify them with, so we can put that on future agenda once we hear back and. what year back from council and what we can notify them with, so we can put that on future agenda once we hear back and I guess, other than that, unless there's other things we need to determine or questions, just, uh, you know, Pete, let us know if there's another issue there, just so we can be aware of it and, uh,
Absolutely.
Support getting everything that makes sense on the shelf, so if we had to make we had to fit it in the schedule because it became emergent again, then we're ready.
Yeah. Yep. Well, we'll measure out the road, get an idea, the pipes, what, twenty-foot lengths, Glenn, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, we'll we'll be able to have a a really good count, how much sections a pipe will need, and like Glenn said, Fern Coats, we'll get a count of everything. Um, and if there's, like Glenn said, certain stuff that we can order ahead of time, the structures, you know, we'll we'll get those done.
Okay, good enough for me, Bill.
I'm satisfied.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for taking your vacation with us, Bill, uh, Glenn, sorry.
Oh, my pleasure.
Hopefully you enjoy some of it.
We're going to, headed out tomorrow.
Good, good, we'll enjoy. All right, well, if there's no other business, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Not all.
To go, have a good night, gentlemen.
You too.